...of Council order for Monday, February 3, 2017. And we have an addition to the agenda with the delegation from the Outdoor Education Class. So, like, Google up the amended agenda. Council Casey, in favor? Option of minutes for January 30, 2017, special council meeting. Council Mackay. Council Kukka. Any discussion on that? In favor? And the minutes for February 6, 2017, the regular council meeting. Council Mackay. Council Kukka, in favor?
May I just make one comment? Um, I did send...
I was looking at a couple of business from... Hey, business arising from the minutes. Council Scott.
On February 6, um, I did send a short notice. I was wondering how much time we need for the without notice or if I could have that changed to with notice.
What page are you on?
On 14, uh, February 6. I know we might have something come up. Um, I sent a text out to a couple of people notifying them that I would be here. So if I could just have that mark with notice?
Yeah, just, yeah. Change that.
Oh, okay.
Anything else? Okay. Delegations, uh, welcome to the next room. HD Mining. Nice to see you here.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Also, Brandon Willis is joining me with HD Mining, our environmental manager, I guess.
Sure.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update, answer any questions that we can. As I always say, if we don't have the answers here today, we will get those answers and get them back to you. Probably not a large, significant update. I want to let you know where we're at. We obviously have concluded our bulk sample. Very little happening at the mine site at this point. We have gone into the Mines Act permitting process. We have, to date, received our provincial environmental assessment certificate. The federal certificate is now with the federal cabinet. They made a determination that there was a significant impact on, from our project, really based on the Caribou and the Quintet Herd. It appears it was a large issue. As a result of that, the minister has referred it to the cabinet for decision. When that happens under the legislation, there is no timeframe pursuant to the legislation that they have to meet. But they will review the recommendation that has gone to them and then cabinet, the federal cabinet, will make a determination whether the significant impact is, I guess, able to be mitigated to some degree and proceed for the mine. So we're awaiting that right now. Obviously, a very important part of the future of our mines is receiving the federal EA. We're confident with everything we've done with receiving the provincial environmental assessment that the federal finding will hopefully be favorable as well. Presently, the reason the mine is virtually at a standstill out there is because we're in the Mines Act permitting process. We have filed for that. We did our bulk sample, everything came out. So far, it's proceeding very well on that front. We've seen prices rebound some. Last two or three months would see it go drop down again, but I didn't think they were going to stay where they were there on the rebound. All indications are that once we get through our Mines Act permitting, the major Mines Act permitting process, it will be then that the decision on a final investment or to proceed or not proceed will be made by the HD Mining themselves. I'm still the eternal optimist. I think it's a good way to produce coal, the underground aspect of this, the ability to get to the coal seam, extract ninety-plus percent of the coal makes things far more economical. I didn't look today at the price of coal, but I'm guessing it's in the 160, what I may be grading. Where we are today, but at those numbers, I think that, you know, I can't speak for the chairman or their, uh, the owners, but I think that plays in favor of seeing a mine proceed. Tumbler Ridge right now is seeing the resurgence of the wolf for sale, the canoe taking out. That's very optimistic for the community as well as the region. But HD Mining's, uh, which continues. Had a number of calls, they know you've left, people HD packed up and left, they're not willing to pursue it. And then you explain that you pursued the permitting process and all of this and, uh, that people understand that. But you try and make sure you give as much information out there. There's still going to be some people that miss that information, but, uh, I think that we continue to do that. The housing project, I don't have a lot to update. I know that Jordan is working some outstanding work within our organization. I do some work for another company that actually did some work on the housing project. So I stepped back from that process so there was no real perceived conflict. And I didn't want to put the company I did some work for or HD Mining in a position where they said, "We're an external work group." So I was led to believe that Jordan has updated you on that housing project. If there are questions that you have, I can write them down, take those and get the answers for you. Certainly, Council Mackay, I know the tree issue is still there. I've made sure they're well aware of that. So I would envision that there's still some work to do on the issue you and I spoke about with the youth in the school. I think it was Janet Hartford was involved.
The Hartford classroom?
Yes. Um, I probably talked very quickly again and gone through this, but there isn't a whole lot more other than, you know, having been around coal mines like most of you a good chunk of our lives and watching what takes place, I remain optimistic that we're going to see the development of this mine. I think as long as coal prices hold, I think they will. Maybe not at the extent they're at today, but certainly not going down to the sub-100 level, hopefully, but, uh, you know, costs a lot of jobs to a lot of communities. But we'll see not only the resurgence of Tumbler Ridge, but as always is the case. When Tumbler is strong, it helps Dawson Creek, it helps Chaplain, it helps the entire region and vice versa. I'll conclude my update with that. It is short, not a whole lot of new information, but still very important to share where we're at with you today. And I'll just reiterate the two key points. The federal environmental assessment, as with the federal cabinet as we speak here this evening. And our Mines Act permits are well underway. Brandon, anything I've missed or that you can add to that?
No. Otherwise, with the Caribou, the BC government undertook a joint study with the, within the province to look at the Caribou. So they're just finishing their phase one of that project to look at what the Caribou habitat looks like. Twenty-seven million they put towards it. So that's going to help impact what the decision is federally, what comes out of those results. But it is a very important subject that they are putting a lot of time into. So we're going to work closely with the First Nations as well on that.
You know, you have, you look at the footprint of HD and then you look at the footprint of Quintet Coal and boom, say, where was the Caribou with HD? You know, it's pretty hard to figure that one out.
It's interesting. I mean, the twenty-seven million that Brandon touched on, it's my understanding seven million in this fiscal year will be spent. Uh, key focus is the Quintet Herd, which I think will benefit, you know, to all of us in this region. I know that the, the penning, uh, calving that has taken place, the, where... And I, I got to tell you, I wasn't a big supporter originally to think, "Gosh, we can do this to nature." But the numbers have increased in the herds where they have pinned and taken. So my guess is they're probably going to go down that road with the Quintet Herd. I'm not the expert in it, but if one shows success, I think following success is a good idea. So we'll see where we land with that expenditure.
Just one other thing I was going to say is that every time they shovel, you guys got a house right across the mine? Every time they shuffle the driveway, I'd get excited, I think, "Oh, here we go."
Just good practice.
Council Casey.
Thank you. Larry, with regards to the permitting that you're still seeking, why, why so long in terms of the delays? Is it a matter of volume of permits that they've got to go through or what?
Oh, no, it's really process. So the way we go through is we file for our, I'll speak provincially because that's the provincial environmental assessment. You go through that, find out if you meet the criteria or if the criteria you don't meet, can you mitigate it? You finally either do or do not get. It would make no sense to go through a full Mines Act permit to receive Mines Act permit if you didn't have your environmental assessment. Now, we did this provincially because we have the provincial EA. We're confident that our federal EA application, which mirrored the provincial in many ways, is going to be successful. But it isn't a delay on the part of the Crown or the company for not. This is the standard practice in moving forward. Once we've reached the point, uh, we completed our bulk sample, we then had laid out that we're going into the Mines Act permit to actually get the permits to operate the whole mine.
So in terms of your timing, what, your best projection, and again, we're not going to hold you up, but what is your best projection in terms of how much more time? I know we talked about that the last time you came down to see us, so...
I think all things being, and it is a projection because it's ultimately in the Crown's responsibility. I would expect to have the Mines Act permit wrapped up within the province of Rich Columbia by fall. And again, that's our best guess. And that's, if something came back where new information was required and we know that kind of curve, we think we've covered everything because we've throughed this a number of times. If, and again, we're going to crystal ball gaze here a bit, Council Casey. If all permits were in place, if the Mines Act permit was achieved, and let's just use fall as the timeline, the federal environmental assessment cabinet has given the green light to move ahead. It's then in the hands of the mine itself, the company itself, to say, "Okay," making the go-ahead decision to do that. I mean, it's still hundreds of millions of dollars in half of the expenditure to move this mine ahead. Having the knowledge of how much money they've spent on their bulk sample, I have to believe they're pretty confident that prices are in the range where you can just inject, I believe. And this is not, you know, confidential information. I believe there are well over 150 million dollars in the development of this bulk sample, which, you know, is a very expensive venture to get a bulk sample.
Are there any lessons taken in terms of Kanuma Coal? Prices of coal, as we know, fluctuate back and forth and up and down. Are there any lessons that you can learn from Kanuma Coal? Because they are operating, operating effectively, hiring people, faced with the same sort of markets and so on. Any, any advantages in terms of being able to capitalize on what they're doing from your perspective?
When I look at Kanuma, I think their, their timing was exceptional to come in as the coal market took a lift and they had stockpile coal. They were part of the transfer and the deal that took place. I would imagine gave them some good capital to begin with. But no, I think that, I don't know if I could say there's lessons to be learned. I think the issue is market. This is a market-driven process. And if your operating cost is X per ton, you need to make more than that or you're not going to be along, around very long. But it's yet. Now, if an open pit can operate at the state of the game today, I certainly think an underground with the longwall mining technique could operate. The difference is your upfront capital cost, as I said earlier. Far more significant to develop your underground mine capital cost than it is on an open pit where you move the overburden, you extract the coal. So you want to make sure that if coal prices are at a level today where you can make money, once your decision is made, you're hoping that stays there or increases or at least over a ten- or twenty-year period is going to level out where you can make your return, so...
I think in terms of the permitting as well, the biggest point right now is that because we are one of the first underground mines in the BC, it's understanding with the provincial regulatory bodies on how we're actually going to operate the safety procedures moving forward. It's trying to get that understanding with them. That's going to be the biggest time during our permitting process here. But once we get through that, I think they'll see how much more effective it is. But right now, it is just trying to make sure that both sides are fully understanding of where we're going.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, Worship. Good luck. We wish you good luck.
Thank you.
And we talked about that training program before. We got back, that was a couple of years now. It seemed to be going in the right direction when people were talking about it being situated here in Tumbler Ridge. Is there any way that we can keep that kind of discussion going?
I think the work that you and Council have done previously on that through discussions with myself, with Chairman Yan and the others, Jody Shimkus, who's been here, I think has, I think you've done your job on that. I think it's fair to say certainly our mines manager has indicated that the training that has to take place, or a good part of it, has to occur close to the mine itself because it will be a group of some classroom work, mine site work. So it's not going to be a long distance. If there's some, I guess, pre-employment requirements where you need to upgrade to get that, then the people could get those wherever they're provided. But when it comes to time to train for the underground mine itself, you know, I can't write or sign on the dotted line, but I think the case has been made, I think it's been heard. I would suggest that if the training occurs, it would be here for the most part so that you have the flexibility to have those people taking the training, to go to mine site, work on mine site, go back to the classroom, possibly the simulator, whatever type of training is being undertaken at that point. But no, I think, originally, I think, and I can speak from experience, I think there was a bit of a concern, where was this going to take place? It was, was it Tumbler, was it Dawson, was it Chelms? I think rightfully yourself and Council got engaged in that and said, "Look, you know, if this is for the mine in Tumbler Ridge, if it's the only underground mine, we expect that training to occur here." I think you made your case and your point and I would suggest that's probably what will occur.
If you ever want us to get involved in that again, we're glad to.
All right. My hope would be, as I think the company has heard it loud and clear, and my discussions have led me to believe that that's part of it. The mine manager has, he's a training close, so there is a mix of classroom onsite, so that's...
We will have a rail line that works.
Right, so that's very important. We could go on length on that one, and I'm sure we're going to.
Okay, I guess that's all. Thank you very much for coming on. It's nice to hear from the horses, most we know.
Now you're calling me a horse. All right. And as I said all the time, if something comes up and, like all of you, most of us know each other or have acquaintances, we get calls, if something comes up, don't hesitate to call. And if I don't have the answer, I'll get it for you immediately. All right.
Take care.
Take care, everybody.
Hey, our second allegation is the Outdoor Education Class. I'm not sure who's all here, however.
I'm just not quite the Outdoor Education Class, but...
You want to ask here?
My first time before council, so please don't make me do anything. Sorry. I'm here today not on behalf of the Outdoor Education Class, but just on behalf of the community room to propose a community forest project within town. Originally, I heard about the potential for this project from Marcia Dufresne. I asked the school just on the topic and asked if I had any interest. And I said, "I would at least be interested to put forth a proposal to council and at a minimum encourage the school to get actively involved in any way they can with this sort of project." So, um, I was told I should have a few proposal options laid out, that things that we would be interested in seeking. My information is based off of contacting Marquita Levki, who was the wife of the man who organized the Community Forest Project in Dawson Creek. I don't know if anyone's had the chance to go to Levki Park, but I have a few pictures to show you what it's all about. It was my favorite part about living in Dawson Creek all of last year. I took my dog there every day and it just made me want to jump on board with it. So some things that she sent me that they needed as part of their park process was approval from, from council, of course, to get the land rezoned to a park was one of their first steps that they did. They got the community involved to construct the trail work that was in there. They built a forestry lookout to overlook certain points within their park that they constructed. Although their lookout was based on, uh, they got an extra grant from the BC Ministry of Forest to plant non-native tree species within the park area alone. And so they built the forestry lookout to look at the non-native tree species that they planted within there and got schools to help with the planting process and making the signs. All of the signs are made by children. They're cute, they're like little teddy bears and squirrels and deer and things throughout the park that indicate different areas. Basically, we're hoping for permission to, to get this underway and make it a reality, to have someone from Community Forest or otherwise arrange for a project manager to just take it and run and make it into a thing. For the school's perspective, I teach geography and my intent would be to get my geography class out there, mapping it, doing topographic maps, that kind of thing, mapping out distances for the trails so that everyone would know what it was all about. The biology class could go in and identify different species of flora and fauna. The outdoor education class, of course, would be all over it, doing all sorts of things in there. I didn't have time to talk to Sarah Mafalb before this meeting, but she showed some interest in the project. The PE classes are already using some of the space on days when they go snowshoeing or cross-country skiing. There's a construction class, finally. We have a little bit of funding added to the school, so construction could help build boardwalks or the signage for the interpretive trail. The media class could look into design principles for the signage. The coding class could link the signage to websites for additional information on any species. Like, the school could jump all over this in almost every class and would love to. We have some students from a geography class here who are just hoping it gets approved so that we can turn it into a project for our geography class. But unless it gets approved, that'll be a sideline and they'll have to do some sort of other project. In terms of support and funds, Community Forests, they need some interest in giving monetary support to the project for making things happen. If we need money to construct boardwalks or signs, they might be able to help out with that. My information from Mrs. Levki shows that there's plenty of organizations willing to offer grant money in anywhere from a thousand dollars to five thousand dollars, depending on who you're talking to and for what purpose. The ATV club has interest as long as they get to maintain their one straight shot through there for their ATV trail that circles the town. And of course, local outdoor enthusiasts would enjoy it. The space, as you can see, is across from the high school between the main highways and the, oh, I just forgot the name of the space, but where the bottle depot and stuff is, the chunk in there. It was already logged, so you can see in the second picture, there's a lot less forested area within the space. But the, the bits that are somewhat orange in there indicate some potential paths that are already there. They just need fixing up. They need a little bit of TLC. It looks a little spare at the moment, but the paths, really, they just need a little bit of upkeep, some cleaning out, maybe some wood chipping in there to make them more neat. In terms of Levki Park, which is my side, that's just kind of their, their map of the main trails. Their water pond in there wasn't a natural feature. They actually had to do a whole bunch of paperwork to get additional grants for additional land and do the water upkeep and all these things. We already have a pond. It exists within the space, it's there already. We don't have to add in anything new or get special grants to work with the water, water, wildlife, things like that. It's already there. We also wouldn't need grants to spend, they spent fifty thousand dollars planting trees because this was originally a farmer's field with almost no trees. We already have all the tree life. Maybe we get a small grant to plant some, some new species that aren't already there naturally. This is just the satellite image of it. Down in the bottom corner here, just in the picture, you can just barely see it, is the lookout that they constructed. They have a little parking lot in front of about six cars. It's kind of up in the, the northern end of town, just behind one of the elementary schools. Passerby because they have a few benches in there and signs. Took my dog there every single day. Was her favorite thing. Dawson Creek does have a designated dog park, so basically everyone in town who likes to let their dog off leash or play with other dogs took them there and ran all over the park. And really, the Levki Park trail system, it's not that big of a space, but because the trails all interconnect and go in different directions, it's over three kilometers of trail if you actually took all of the turns about in there. And I think it's just a wonderful opportunity. It's something council would be interested in.
Any questions, Council? Council Scott.
I was just wondering what that area is zoned at right now? And that is something we'd have to look at in our OCP. We need to rezone.
Do you know that up hand or...
No, Worship, I don't know. We could find definitely get that information.
It's Sylinda's Park.
Is it?
Yeah.
Here's one area that we've talked about in Council about doing something like this. We have to make it more accessible for tourism.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I know that we've had informal talks amongst our board and Community Forests and we're kind of glad that you have, bringing it to Council for, for consideration because that's really all we're waiting for, maybe to move a little, little, a little farther on this project. We're definitely interested there for sure. The, the location cannot be beat. It's directly across from the school, it's for cross-country, for anything, for gym class. I mean, the, the, the facility could be used. I mean, there's just no, there's no end to what, it's just, you're limited only by your imagination what you can really do in there. We've had informal talks, we're putting lookout platforms, same thing, they kind of look down on the pond. Anything from what I, from the conversations that I've been involved in, it looks like there's nothing planned to go on around the pond. It's kind of just moving around in that, that back area there. Establishing more trails and fixing up the ones that are there, making them a lot more suitable for walking for all ages, walking dogs, that type of thing, so... So that really would, would, I think what we're really looking for is council's approval.
Hervy?
Thank you, Worship. I think anything that kind of gets our students engaged. I know there's a lot of excitement about that area from the outdoor ed class and then when you're, you're talking about the other, other classes that could be involved in that area. And I think it's definitely worth councils looking into on how we would use that area. I know it would accent the visitor information center too. So I think, you know, the more people that are interested, I think more work and talk needs to go into it, for sure. I think you would have my support in, in looking at, at, at that kind of a project.
So, uh, what are we looking for here? Getting staff to deal with the classes and just see what...
Could investigate it further.
Have some kind of report that, that something that we've discussed lots on the table and never really gone anywhere. So we can just give that to staff to, need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Like to put forward a motion that the District Tumbler Ridge look into the development, or the, um, it would be the development would be the, uh, the idea of having a interpretive trail located within that park. Something to that effect.
Secretary? Council Hervy? Any discussion on that motion? In favor? Okay, so we'll get that going and hopefully, what's, what's, what's the timeline? What is your timeline? What do you perceive is, when it comes to that, you want it to happen?
I would love it to happen. I think it'd be an amazing feature within the town that people would take advantage of and that this, I've... Right now, if, if things get approved and things get put in motion, I would think it would be something that we could schedule for the school for even Sept-, as early as September. And my geography class would get in there before the end of September if it gets approved quickly because I'd get them in there doing topographic maps and stuff and practicing the skills they're learning in there. But what they did with Levki Park, they had years to do different activities. They did tree planting one year, they did the duck pond another year. They, they always had something that they were working on for a project and at every stage tried to get the school involved on whatever level they could. Theirs was mostly elementary school kids naming the trails, but I think the high school here could really step in and use it as... here could really step in and use it as essentially an outdoor classroom for all sorts of different purposes, for all sorts of different classes. Yeah.
Yes.
Would this be a Community Forest project with the district partnering and often support?
I would think, and this council can correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be a partnership with the school involved, so it'd be a three B.
Okay.
I think there's an opportunity for all to step in here in the school district 59, maybe at the province, through the job skills training, the pathways that were made, maybe it could be, that area could be enhanced and that, as well as the district, the Community Forest, and who knows who else.
Right, so we've got enough information? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks.
Your first one was great. Okay, that teaches correspondence, and the first one is the meeting and postmaster assistance association for information or discussion. Oh, did I miss something? Yeah, I went very fast, so we'll go back to that council meeting action summary. Dr.
So I got two things on this. First one's on rural residential lots. Showing a status, expected completion is September 2017. Now, I'm sure that's not September 2017 that we're going to have lots available for sale.
Mr. Mac.
Your worship through the council, I believe that is to prepare a report, so.
So how do we go about expediting wishes of council? In my mind, that this is something that needs a lot more attention than the end of September. We totally miss another building season and was led to believe that this wouldn't be a big ordeal to draft up something to report. Is this something that we can direct staff to expedite the process, or is there a flavor around the rest of council to do that?
Councilor Casey.
I don't, I don't have a problem, Your Worship, with receiving some more information. My only concern would be when they've got the number of projects that are listed down at the moment. I don't believe they're listed in order of priority, so if we had a discussion relative to which it should be first, the second, the third, and the fourth, because we're not going to be able to do all of them all at the same time. So I can't see any reason why we couldn't consider putting them into some kind of priority order, assuming that council is receptive to making that happen.
Councilor McKay.
Is there anything in the meantime, in the way of identifying an area that this would be suitable for? Perhaps even doing a little bit of surveying in that way, that if we're looking at changing the zoning for that area, at least that would be set to go. Is that something that would assist, or is that all part and parcel of the?
I think we directed it to that road to Sanctuary Valley. That road's someplace in there. I don't think we ever narrowed it right down to exactly where we were talking, but it's along that road is where.
Yeah, somewhere that's accessible, power lines and the road, but that's for staff to try to figure out where is the best spot in there if they want to come back to us, but I just don't want to see them come back in September 2017 and then say, oh yeah, that area won't work. Then we're going into, okay, another six months down the road. To me, I want action on this now. This has been two and a half years. This is something I, when I started in this position, I said I wanted right off the get-go, and I'm just, it's just too long for me, so. I want like a flavor from council to staff to say, this is something that we want expedited, we'd want answers on this stuff sooner rather than later. Put your resources towards this instead of the other stuff that we're chasing. That's what I want. That's my feeling on it, and that's why I'm looking for the flavor of the rest of council on it. As for Councilor Kaye's discussion, I think a lot of this stuff is already, we're just waiting for the process to happen. One of them's already taken care of, one of them's at disposal, you know, really on this action item list. This is the only one that's on the action item list that isn't waiting for something else to happen, so this is directly for staff to go chase down, unless they are waiting on something that we don't know about. I just want to make sure that that isn't lost on staff, that this is a priority of council. It is of this councillor anyways.
Councilor Casey.
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, I'm going to suggest the fact that we set them in order of priority. My concern, without having our administrator here, somebody who has made some comments in the past relative to the fact, fine, we can do whatever you, the council wants us to do, but that's going to mean that's delayed, we can't do that, and we can't do this, so we need whatever. That's all I'm looking for. In terms of having that information, setting them in the order of priority that we want, appreciating the fact that what we may be losing or gaining, whatever it turns out to be, and then do it. No problem.
How do you bring this to next PMP? If council feels that it was set a priority to it? Councilor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree to take it to next PMP. Also, maybe at that PMP, we can find out if those lots, the area we chose for those lots, is why that timeframe is where it's at, and if there are lots available closer or in a different area that could be pushed to sale quicker, maybe we can have a list of those.
We have motion.
Okay.
Motion to put it on to our next PPC, is that what you're looking for? Okay, there's motion.
Mary.
And when we're on the, so on February 6th, I mean, that item is maybe when it's placed on the action item list, but that's been ongoing since the beginning of the year. And the live-in TR pamphlet, staff to prepare in progress. Again, I think this pamphlet is ninety percent done, the way I understand it from the Fort McMurray fire. I don't, still don't understand the delay on it while the hiring process is going on. This is something that they've asked for, you know, the number one employer in Tumbler Ridge, and we're six weeks into it, seven weeks into it, and we haven't been able to prepare anything for them. To me, it's getting a little timely again, like, this is something that I want to see done now and not later, so.
They actually, I remember they did request it again at Chamber. Yes, it is, maybe we can get some information on that, but we're taking.
Thank you, Your Worship. From what I understand, I spoke with staff today, and this pamphlet is in draft form already, so it's just waiting for another couple more pairs of eyes, and it could be ready by next week.
The initial was, because it has been asked for, and they're doing job fairing and sketching in that position.
Just an update to January 4th, conference call. I think a date has been set for February twenty.
Okay, anything else? Now we'll move on to correspondence. Six point one, meeting postmaster and assistance association. Information or discussion?
For discussion.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just reading through this letter that we received, I think it's not a bad idea to keep this kind of on our radar, because in the past, when we've had a downturn in the economy here in Tumbler, we've had problems with banking, and if postal services are looking at smaller communities like ours and bringing services to the post office, banking services, it could be something that we could look at in the future, and it might not be a bad idea just to, you know, send a letter to them and just kind of get some more information or just say that we're a community that could be interested in that kind of service in
You'd like to make a motion to send a letter?
Okay. I'll make a motion to send a letter to the Honorable Judy Foote, Minister of Public Services and Procurement, House of Commons, Ottawa, Ontario, in regards to postal services in Tumbler Ridge.
Bank.
The banking, yes. Banking services.
Second for that. Any more discussion on it?
Wasn't prepared to speak on this one until we go through, but what will this do to our existing banks if we were to, if this were to help? Does this help or hinder existing bank in Tumbler Ridge?
I think.
Does this take business away from them?
I think we're just asking for some information to see what.
We're asking for information or send a letter in support?
Information.
Okay.
Just.
Just asking for some information. Scott.
And my thoughts are kind of on the same as Councilor Howe. Information is fine, but I would definitely be in favor of keeping the financial institutions in business, opposed to like the post office is a looking place to stay alive in small communities too, and reaching out for the qualifications, so that would be something that would need to be studied very carefully.
I think the only time we really get up serious at this is if the bank said, okay, we're leaving. My eyes, that'd be the only time I would be serious about that. Councilor.
And also just to find out, I think there's a lot of people that don't bank at the Lakeview Credit Union, a lot of people still travel outside of town, and just kind of what services that they specifically offer is what I'm looking at.
We're looking at town hall meetings this year. This might be a topic of discussion or a town hall meeting, if you want a flavor of the residents, or, you know, in regards to banking or, you know, their options.
I got there two minutes after four today, and I wasn't really happy. Okay, anything else? Everybody got anything else that you can? Okay, six point two, Tumbler Ridge Global GeoPark Program Coordinator. Councilor Casey.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we support the request for thirty-six thousand dollars for wave assistance to hire program coordinator as presented.
Second for that. Six point three, Northeast Regional Advisory, Anthony. I'd like to ask for myself, for a designate to be able to attend this. It's, I used to attend them all the time, and there's, you get some input into the type of things that are going on in UNBC and St. John, and there are things that do affect Councilor Casey.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your request was for yourself or a designate to attend?
Yeah.
I would move.
Need more discussion on it? Okay, six point four, PRD Recycling Program, operational change, information or discussion? Councilor McKay.
Discussion, I've just got a question on that. Does that result in any changes to any type of pickup to Tumbler Ridge or any fee changes?
You can ask that after, second.
Getting too anxious, yeah. Yeah, I just wondered if there's any changes to the services that are provided or the charges that are provided for those services.
I sit on the PRD and I don't, I haven't heard of any. I could check into it a little more and bring back more information on.
While we're on the topic, you know, this is something that we've been around a few times, but why not get on it now, is that recycling baler that we bought that's a hundred eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment sitting in public works with a bar for it? What's our plan for that, or are we pursuing recycling at any point? Does this help us pursue that at any point? Should we be selling that thing, or what's the litter on council on that?
I think there's going to be some changes in recycling coming up here, and I'm hoping that it will involve Tumbler Ridge. We're sure getting ready for it. We're putting garbage cans and we're doing the new truck and stuff that's going to be sort of abandoned recycling, so. I'm hopeful over next year, we're going to see some changes to MMV, and that will be taken on the customers, so. It's the discussions that are going on around the PRD. Yes.
I'd like to put a motion on the table to direct staff to find out what value of the recycling baler is at this point, if we try and sell it.
Second for that. Any more discussion on that? Okay.
Load it over here too.
Pose is, do a pose. Ready, any more discussion on the recycling program? Okay, that is six point five, Tumbler Ridge Minor Hockey Association Facility waiver.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move that we grant the TRMA, TRMHA, one of the district's conference center facility waivers as requested.
Second for that. Okay. Discussion. Just curious, how many of those three were mentioned in that lot? Another was a couple other ones that were turned down, one was away. There is, we said at the last hash that we were going to come up with some kind of policy for this. And I have to say, I was at a, at a do over there here a couple weeks ago, and honestly, I think that could have been held in a smaller venue. So I think, I think, what my opinion is, that our uses over there should be used on things that are bringing people to town, like the bird watching thing, they said there's a hundred people coming or something, Community Forest that Robert's talking about, they're running a hundred people or something like that. I can't see using, given that rental space out and it's already half-used or something, you know, for, I'm not sure what amount of people or whatever it is for minor hockey, but I know they usually use four or five, and it's part of the rec center, and I, I can't see that not being used anymore. It's getting so out of that. Conference center over there is what everybody wants, but it's. I think we gotta come up with a policy so that when these things show up, if we don't have enough everybody. That's okay.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that. I think that's made for conferences, that's what it's for, or there's a special occasions where the district wants to do something with the residence at Tumbler Ridge, Canada's Forum, that type of thing. We do have the facilities in the rec center. I voted in favor of the firefighters using that room for one specific reason, because of the services they provide to this town, free of charge, and the respect, I think, that everybody has for them, that I vote in favor, and probably will again. But I don't see it as being for this specific type of use when we have so many other places that could facilitate this.
But I think if we had a policy, then it's fair to everybody, you know, it's the same layout for anybody else. Jim, can I get a motion for next PMP, so we can talk about for, that is already on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Okay. Any other discussion on?
You know, I think the point has to be taken too, especially the. You know, I think the point has to be taken too, especially like the bird watchers and stuff like that, when they come in, they're utilizing those hotels over there and they're booking 100 rooms potentially. You'd think they'd give them the fee waiver themselves rather than coming to council to ask for the fee waiver. Same thing as minor hockey, although I'm going to get shot by my friends at minor hockey. This type of a thing should, minor hockey should approach that hotel and ask for a fee waiver from them, not from council. When we bring tournaments into town, we bring six or seven teams from out of town and we fill these hotels on five or six weekends with the five or six age groups we have. You would think they would at least give that back to minor hockey. So my approach, they should be going to the hotel to ask for that fee waiver on those rooms, same as the bird watchers and them. And I agree, anything that we get our for uses on should be for our district staff parties or if we want to give it to a specialized group like the firefighters.
On the motion? On favor? Close? Hey, can I get a motion to bring it to the next P&amp;P that discusses? Councilor Guy? Second? Any discussion, more discussion on it?
I actually thought last year we already, you direction came up, two staff, come back with some of the sort of, I think we were just waiting for it. We were, because we had the same discussion last week.
We did.
In regards to these rooms.
Well, we'll have it at the next P&amp;P then. On favor? Close? Hey, bylaws. This is for that intercommunity business license that we talked about at the last meeting. Recommendation. That's the first one, the recommendation. Councilor Kirby?
Recommendation that council gives first reading to the intercommunity business license bylaw number 645, 2017.
Second? Discussion?
So just what we're doing, redoing this bylaws, just read through some of it, but is all the other changes coming into here in regards to the business license from our own district? Now that was being looked at.
Worship and through the council, this intercommunity business license bylaw is separate and apart from our regular district business license bylaw. And that bylaw is in its, almost in its final form and should be coming to you at the next or the next couple of meetings for first and second readings.
I was thinking about this after our last meeting and do we know what other towns charge for their business licenses? That did come into play on this here because you go to where it's cheapest and you get to do business in any town.
This, your worship through the council, this $130 for this standard community business license is across the board.
At every...
Yes.
All right. It was probably in there, I didn't read it.
Only difference about your worship is, is it's wherever your storefront is. So if we're $100 for business license, in Dawson Creek it's $25 bucks. And I'm a whole biggest business, multi toss, I can make my own fund in Dawson Creek. He resides in his teams. That's the only difference.
Any other discussion on it? On favor? Close? Second one.
The council gives second reading to the intercommunity business license bylaw number 645, 2017.
Did you add the last part there too?
And that council authorizes the opportunity for all persons considered affected by the bylaw to make representation to council at March 6, 2017, regular meeting.
Second? Discussion? On favor? Hey, new business. Yeah, I got here that, I got that, sorry. Add that in. Okay, new business, prohibited animals, recommendation there. Councilor Mackay?
Recommend council direct staff to prepare an amendment to the animal responsibility bylaw number 633, 2016, to align our prohibited animal section with provincial standards.
Second? Discussion?
How much time are we talking about for staff to have to do this?
On favor?
Within the next couple of meetings.
Like is it, does this take five hours of staff time, 10 hours of staff time?
No, not to do an amendment.
Anything else? On favor? Uh, eight point two, municipal endorsement of Northern Development Initiative Trust Grant for Tumber Ridge Days Society. Recommendation there. Councilor Mackay?
Recommend the council support the T R, the Tumber Ridge Day Society, TR Day Society, fabulous festivals and events. Declaration of the Church.
On the TR days? Yes, let's do it.
On favor?
Hello? It's got to be a record. Sorry, guys.
Hey, eight point three, Minor and Juice Services Society. Recommendation? Councilor Kirby?
The council approves the amendment to the Minor and Juice Services Society lease agreement to include provisions particular to the annual hosting of the society's wake-up on and the associated waiver of facility rental fees of the Tumber Ridge team.
Okay. Discussion?
I was noting that it references on page 43, Parks and Recreation, 16.1.1, most policies and actions. Do we still have some documentation on Parks and Rec or is it something that needs revisited?
Okay.
Thank you, your worship and through the council, these goals are from the OCP. So the OCP is still, sorry. Well, we have been discussing revising or starting apart from recreation and there was a study and I think that was one of the things we declined on the budget for 2017. They're assuming it looks like we're still referencing Parks and Rec, so I just had some questions on that, like is that something we've dissolved or we don't have a Parks and Rec anymore, but it looks like we still are referring to again our OCP. So it's just something that probably needs investigating?
I know our CEO was looking into, we bring him back a Park and Rec and just going to bring it forward to council, but it hasn't gone here yet. Torvald, is there anything more you can add to that?
Not exactly, I've asked Mr. Park, has he thought on that?
Your worship through the council, if you have clarification on a question we can ask the council staff?
Well, just, it looks like we have a staff report referencing Parks and Rec Department and items that are in this... Youth Services Society lease, so I'm just wondering, and I don't, it's my understanding that we needed to get another report to reestablish a Parks and Recs. So to me, there's some confusion here referencing something that we don't have currently. And I'm not sure if we need to revisit our OCP or like this. I'm unclear about why there's a reference to Parks and Rec in this report.
Worship through the council, Scott. In response to that, Parks and Recreation is a general term within the OCP, it's not particular to a particular department. I would agree with you, there's probably something that needs to be explored within the OCP as itself in terms of the generalities, in terms of terminology. What is the common term now of department in most municipalities used for consistency is community services and facilities, not particularly Parks and Recreation because it gives a more broader scope with regards to the definition. From my understanding, Councilor Scott, is that for the wishes of council for this year, the initiative, the Parks Recreation Master Plan has been tabled for review for next year for presentation to council as well as a review of the OCP. So the OCP as manager Travell had indicated is still active and is the current document from management to refer to as the initiative council moving forward. If it is directed at council, maybe investigation in terms of future and the future of this year, needs to be particular to that department.
Ready? Any other discussion on it? On favor? Airport land lease for yellowhead helicopters, can you get that recommendation?
I feel worship that council authorized an airport officer to execute an airport land lease with yellowhead helicopters limited for a three-year term in April 1st, 2017 and ending March 31st, 2020.
Discussion?
So how is this lease sense for the district of Tumber Ridge to be involved in any particular way for the value that's listed on it? $25 per month? I would think for us to even conduct it, for you guys to put this on the report, waste the staff time to get it here and then send an invoice out and get it back and run it through the system, that would cost a hell of a lot more than $25 a month. How was this lease ever determined at $1.30 a meter squared? How did we ever come up with that number?
Worship through the council, special counselor now, this lease was, or the airport cost for this was determined by a previous council. And there was at that time a poll taken with the airports in the area as to what they were leasing their space for. And that's what, that's how we come up with this space. I think maybe the fact, a factor that why it's not as, why the amount is not as much is because they're not leasing a large space, it's just enough space to store their fuel. Just a small space.
So this is not the space that has the building on it, the wood structure building?
No, that's Ridge Rogers.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a different one.
So again, I would think to me, if you want to lease the space for that amount, there should be at least cover your processing handling costs for you guys to do that type of work. To me, this is not enough money for it, so I'll be holding it against it. These are the types of things that we've got to start dialing in on and stop throwing our money away where we can recoup some costs. I'm pretty sure these guys will do another, it's $1,000 an hour rent a helicopter, so I'm pretty sure we can get a few more bucks with these guys to at least cover your guys' time to do it, so.
Scott?
And it would be nice to know what the 2017 rates for leasing are going at in Dawson or Chautauqua, well, Dawson and Fort St. John, yes.
Torvald, I was just wondering if council's desire is to look at the lease rates that we're charging at the airport. Can we get back to these people and say we're going to do just one year? Continue in this lease and then we'll look at it next year and then we'll decide.
If that's the will of council, we can certainly do that.
The, these rates were comparable with any other in the district. The idea was to keep that facility in town because they were considering McKenzie, other areas, and that's why we prefer the rate to be here in town. That's why that rate was kept in line with everything else that's going on in the area.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Councilor Howe in regards to amount, because I also see on the bylaw which moved to 2018 is a new building throughout the airport. So I mean, that would be at our expense if we're not making any recoup of cost, right? Talking about new airport building out there because the one we have out there is in shambles and might last a year, is what Mr. Beal had said. So if we're only charging this and if it doesn't pay for our staff time or any of our paperwork, then we're going to put another building out there? Don't get me wrong, I mean, there's users that use that airport as well. I would support 25.
Does council, on the favor, extend this for a year and then look at our airport rates as a whole? Because I don't think the building is for yellowhead helicopters. Councilor Kirby?
Thank you, worship. What is the dollar value that it would take to just recoup our costs, just our, just office costs or what kind of costs are we looking at that Councilor Howe was looking for, for recouping? Do we have a number that we could...
I think the cost you talk about, the cost to build yellowhead helicopters.
Your processing.
Your processing.
$25, let me go over there. But I mean, we can't, we can't do that unless we know what other airports are charging. We don't know that right now. It could have gone way up here, so.
Don't... Sorry, I'm talking about lying here, but. If all it is is a fuel storage area or whatnot, I mean, they're coming in here to fuel up and then fly south of Tumber Ridge, there's nowhere else to go. So if they can get their fuel in Dawson Creek if they want to fly around Dawson, if you want to come south of Tumber, you got to fuel up here anyways, so that, you know, are we going to lose that so they got some spot in the woods where they can fuel up? I don't think so. But in my mind, we also haul water and sewer from that spot out there. You know, there's power out there and there's bathrooms, so we have to haul the water and the sewer and make it use of that terminal building. So to me, it's just, it's not in line. If we were, you know, I don't know what it would cost, four hours of staff time per year or something, but if you were another $100, you know, I could deal with that for a year, another, you know, $125 a month lease or something like that, I could deal with, but for, until you look at it for a year, but I wouldn't want to, you know. We're different than Dawson Creek and Fort St. John, there's helicopter companies out there that make money all the time up there, so.
I think you're wrong if you think they won't drop their fuel cans in the bush, because I've cleaned up a lot of them over the years. Councilor Scott?
So would you be happy with a cost recovery, like us doing a study to see exactly how much that facility?
I don't think we need to do a study on it, I think we just tack an amount on there that sounds reasonable to us, you know? We wouldn't do that in our own businesses, right? We wouldn't go out and, how much money should we charge somebody to do it? We'd come up with a number that we feel comfortable with.
But we'd need that information, we'd need that cost off the sewer, the facility, and then split that over the users.
Ready, I'll call the question, on favor? Close? Are we going to do that like that or are we going to, can somebody make a motion to move this thing forward so that it's not just doing nothing? Councilor Guy?
I'm almost, we're going to be using more staff time to do this, but I will put a motion forward to maybe cost, what did we recover? Any staff time, any involving cleanup or whatever, race removal, that type thing? We're talking somebody going to bathroom? Whatever money that we feel we need to recoup should be recognized in this agreement.
Second for that? Councilor Casey? Yeah, because if there's been any costs over the last five years, we should know it. Our work should be for tellers.
Your worship, I actually, I put my hand up to, the motion just seems to be wide open, there's no specific terms to have any details we'd like to charge or whatever. That was my only comment that I was going to make. It would be a little more specific on the motion so we know exactly what it is we're passing, if it's going to pass.
I think, I think if I'm wrong, you asked for staff to come back with a price to cover our costs. I think, I think if I'm wrong, you asked for staff to come back with a price that cover our costs, you know.
Will the staff take a bet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Is anyone in favor of getting a report that tells us how many people are using the airport? Like, do we have anything like that in numbers?
We should go and get it.
But without putting too much work on stuff. Because our, we don't know exactly how many helicopters, businesses use that facility to warrant whether or not we want to. But we have building out going out there.
Look at that a little further, but that didn't have a whole bunch to do with this.
No, but that could maybe perhaps be on a P and P. And then if we have another, you know, this, this here expires March 31st and we do need to have an answer for them on a cost. I would, I would support the motion of cost recovery for this year.
Okay. Oh, it comes to P and P and here's a discussion. Hey, on the motion, find out what the costs are, on favor? Hey. Visitor information sign design recommendation?
Recommend the council approve the visitor center sign design as presented.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I think the sign looks really good. I'm just wondering, is there, are we going to be putting in spots for flags behind it?
I don't, there is flags over there.
Yeah, they're just, okay, I won't bring, oh, it's French, never mind. That's right. See, where have I been?
I can't even, I can't even see it from here.
I'm so used to seeing the flags on the, on the, on the fakes, or the, not fake, but the, the old sign.
Hey, on favor? Pose. Okay, it should be on the meetings. Can we add our council?
Move information, worship.
Second. Okay, on favor? The, all the same priorities we have, have, we've got any? This motion is none of council's business. Counselor McKay.
Other than the special meetings, budget meetings involving attendance, nothing else to report.
I have nothing to report.
I'm calling, your worship, nothing to report at this stage.
I'm just gonna comment on a meeting I was at, the high school, it was on fentanyl and opioid that's happening around the province. So I'd just like to thank our, it was represented by our fire department, our police department and our medical staff, Jones and Marsh. So I would just like to say that was a great thing to bring to our high school and I think there was some great information there and for parents and students. And I think if any parent had any questions, that they would easily just contact the school and I think information is there.
The only thing I have is I just wanted to let council know in the next few weeks here, I'll be trying to put forward a notice of motion that deals with our bear problem in the spring and summertime, that we'll be actually dealing with the bears and trying to find some way to eliminate problem bears on our schedule, not on the province's schedule. So it'll resolve a few letters that we'll have to send out that'll have to be on behalf of the district. But just to let you know that that's the, my intention to go in the direction. We've had two and a half years of getting nowhere with it and I think it's time for us to put a stand up and say that, you know, when we have problem bears in the community, we want to get rid of them, not whatever. Replant our shrubs or go pick our berries, we want them removed from the town and that's what I'm gonna put forward, so. Just to give you the heads up, it's coming.
Ready? I've got nothing out of that budget meeting too, so it's a good day to be here. So I guess we're going on a push and ask a period. Anybody scared now?
I don't have anything. I'll make a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want counselor Hal to know that I totally support what he's going after. Last couple of summers, many of us felt like we were grounded, we couldn't go anywhere because of the bear problem. So I thank you for that and I wish you great success.
Ready, Trent? Hey. Good night. Mr. Kirby, on favor?
Thank you.
Have anything to add to this?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty well. Counselor.
Because that, that is all, anytime this.
Certainly, yes.
That's all I was wanting, like when we say we want to do this thing, it's process, it's a technical.